Colo Oatana City Council Meeting for Tuesday, April 4th, 2017 to order. Do we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Rainey.
Here.
Spenvy.
Here.
Boss.
Here.
Oakberg.
Here.
Dodson.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Mayor Coontz.
Here.
We have all seven of the councilmen and the mayor present.
Everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone on a beautiful Tuesday night in Colo Oatana. First thing is to approve the agenda and we need to add one thing for the mayor. He has an appointment to make, so I will look for approval of the agenda with that. You add something to your agenda. Motion by Brent to approve the agenda here is second.
Second.
Second by Jeff. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So the first thing on our agenda this evening is we're going to go to the mayor and he has an appointment to make.
Thank you Greg. Roy Colette has resigned his position on the West Hills Commission. It seems like Roy is moving out to Oregon, so he won't be able to attend those meetings, which he hasn't been too good at anyway, so we will ask the city council to accept Roy's resignation.
So moved.
Motion by Nate to accept the resignation of Roy Colette. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Brent. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And the next thing about it is we found a gentleman that was willing to serve on the West Hills Commission, so I'm asking city council to approve James Erzak as a candidate to serve on the West Hills Commission.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin to approve.
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations.
Well, now we can do the oath of office. I told you you'd have to, and I was pleased you didn't have a problem. I don't think I know everybody. Thank you very much for taking this to this oath of office. I, James Erzak.
I, James Erzak.
Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the statements of the Constitution.
The statements.
The laws of the city of Oatana.
Laws of the city of Oatana.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge to duties.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge to duties.
Of the office of West Hills Commissioner.
The office of West Hills Commissioner.
Of the city of Oatana.
The city of Oatana.
Which I am appointed to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Which I am appointed to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Jim, thank you very, very much.
If you can give me that one back. I want that one back. We keep it on file as well. Did you sign it?
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 1.3. It's a public hearing to consider establishment of Development District Number Nine and use of tax increment financing, number nine dash one for property 122 West Vine. This also includes three resolutions. And we'll go to Troy for this and then Mr. Cheetah is here tonight.
So this is the redevelopment of the old Arnold House project to be replaced with the new Ace Hardware Store. If you recall, we did approve and purchased and closed on the property of the old Arnold House back in December. We have been working with Dave Nyman with Ace Hardware to put together the project and part of that project was the utilization of tax increment financing. And so we do have Ed Cheetah here, our consultant with Advanced Resources, that will talk through the TIF plan.
Good evening, thank you. The proposal Troy's outlined already, which is redevelopment project, and we do these from time to time in the community and they tend to be somewhat of the tougher projects to do because the budgets are always tight. The general philosophy that Troy and I have followed is with the direction of the council is that we're trying to assist these projects by removing the impediments or development. You know, and this is like when we worked with the hospital and we ended up tearing it down and I think on the Oak Street one there was some public improvements. So these projects vary. Their specific development is a redevelopment tax increment district, which may last for a period of up to 26 years. In this particular instance, you know, it's an older building that needs to be removed. There are some hazards and things that need to be taken care of. There's a publicly owned property next to it that should provide some of the parking that needs improvements. The site improvements that will be funded here essentially will result in the land becoming a bare piece of land and then construction can go forward on that. Troy and I have been coordinating with the property developer and their architect to see that these activities will mesh together. They're going to undertake the activities on a private basis, including some of the improvements of the parking lot. And that will be done according to city specifications and everything, but by meshing that together, they're hoping, you know, they save some dollars and able to bring the whole project together financially. The main thing with tax increment has always been how is the project being funded? You know, we do the pay-as-you-go tax increment financing. We do different types. In this instance, the city is talking about paying for the project activities and then receiving the increment back over time to reimburse itself for those costs. So it's a little bit different, but that's what it took to get this particular project So tonight we have, with this is typically, we always have the underlying project area. This is called Development District Number Nine. This is that broad statute that says the city can do tax increment financing, can undertake these types of activities. Then we have the tax increment financing plan, which puts together the numbers, the estimates of what the tax increment is going to be. We've arrived at that based on the building plans that have been submitted and evaluated by the county assessor and then we just project out the increment. And in this instance, that increment will repay the city plus 3% interest over the life of the district is the intent here. And when the city uses, and like I say, there's three resolutions, the Development District Resolution, the Tax Increment Resolution, and whenever we upfront a project, technically that is bonding. And so we have a resolution that permits, in this instance, an interfund loan that allows economic development money to be borrowed to a tax increment account. And that is the accounting measure for this. It doesn't change anything. It just facilitates the reporting out on this later on to the state auditor and then into the financial plan and everything. So those are the very guts of the discussion this evening. And do you have any questions?
I think the first thing we'll do is we'll open a public hearing. Anyone in the audience that wishes to speak, they can come up to the microphone and sign in. So we'll open the public hearing at 7:12 PM. And like I say, if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak about this, feel free to come up and talk. There be none to speak, well I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Nate to close the hearing, second.
Second.
Second by Brent. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the public hearing is closed at 7:13 PM. Now we can go to council discussion. Does anybody have questions of Troy or Ed while he's here about this matter? None?
Motion to approve.
We'll move on to the resolutions. The first one is Resolution 32-17 to approve the establishment of Development District Number Nine. And Kevin, you are making a motion to approve that. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The second resolution is 33-17 to approve the TIF District Number Nine Dash One and the use of tax increment financing.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve Resolution 33-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The third resolution is 34-17 to approve the terms of the interfund loans for the TIF District Number Nine Dash One. What are the council's wishes on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dave to approve Resolution 34-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So I guess that takes care of this project, so. Thank you Troy, thank you Ed for coming. Next on the agenda is the mayor and he has a couple of proclamations to make.
Greg, thank you again. First proclamation is for National Service Recognition Day. This morning we met at the senior center and recognized the people that deliver meals on wheels. We had one that's been delivering them since 1984 and another one that's been delivering them for 20 years. They deliver roughly about 80 to 88 meals a day. So it's excellent to have volunteers that provide such great service. Proclamation reads, whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's counties and cities are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas, national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economy and social well-being. And whereas, national service participants increase the impact of organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas, national service participants a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas, the national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, partisanship by making intense commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas, the corporation of national and community service shares a priority with county officials and mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining the National League of Cities, National Association of Counties, cities of service, and mayors and county officials across the country for Mayor and County Recognition Day for National Service on April 4th, 2017. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Tom Coontz, Mayor of the city of Oatana, to hereby proclaim April 4th, 2017 as National Service Recognition Day and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city and county, to thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to the communities. Signed, Thomas A. Coontz. And if anybody wants to volunteer to do meals on wheels or any other, they would welcome more volunteers to be able to do that, so. The other one is a proclamation for Blue Ribbon Month. Every child is born into a world filled with unlimited possibilities and we must ensure all our young people have the support they need to recognize their enormous potential. And whereas, regardless of who they are or the circumstances of their birth, each child deserves to be cared for, cherished, and kept safe from harm. And whereas, a strong, stable family is the best foundation for a promising childhood. And when parents and caregivers have support from their families, friends, and their community, they are more likely to provide a safe and healthy environment for their children. And whereas, child abuse includes physical, sexual, and emotional abuse, physical or emotional neglect, or physical endangerment. And whereas, the month of April was first declared Child Abuse Prevention Month in the United States during 1983. And whereas, the National Blue Ribbon Campaign uses the month of April to bring awareness of child abuse prevention. And whereas, the Exchange Club of Oatana wants to increase public awareness of the National Blue Ribbon Campaign in hopes of making our community a better place to live by encouraging everyone to not turn their backs and help stop or prevent child abuse, future child abuse. Now therefore I, Thomas A. Coontz, Mayor of the great city of Oatana, hereby proclaim the month of April 2017 as Blue Ribbon Month to prevent child abuse. And I ask the citizen of Oatana to help bring an end to child abuse and neglect. Signed, Thomas A. Coontz.
Thank you Mayor. Next on the agenda is a finance report and that will be read by Vice President Rainey.
Thank you. Checks over $20,000 tonight are as follows. $29,790 to Kato Roofing for the power plant roof repair. That is an insurable loss. $96,233 to Rocon Incorporated, that is also for the power plant roof repair and that's insurable loss. $20,304 Steel County Treasurer. $23,441 Westmore Fluid Solutions. $348,525 Southeast Service Cooperative, that is the health insurance premiums. $21,833 US Bank monthly credit card bill. Other expenditures tonight are $277,975 for a total expenditure tonight of $818,102.90.
Thank you Kevin. Do I hear a motion to approve the bills?
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion by Jeff to pay the bills. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda in that it consists of minutes, permits and licenses, reports, contracts, agreements, and other miscellaneous items that are all grouped together and presented to the council before the meeting so we can review them and enact in one motion. So what is the council's wishes on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Nate to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Brent.
Yep.
Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we move on to action items. The first item is 3.1.1, the lease agreement for the use of the Oatana Fire Hall by the Steel County, and we'll go to Chris for this.
Thank you Greg. As you're aware, in January, a pipe burst at the Steel County Courthouse causing some severe damage to the structure, making it unfit to be used for the courthouse. In order to restore the operations as quickly as possible, the courthouse personnel and operations were relocated to our fire hall. This lease that we have prepared is a document that will allow us to clearly define insurance, indemnification, and maintenance requirements by both parties. Budget impact, there's just a nominal amount of rent of $100 per month. Steel County is also providing janitorial services for the entire building and staff would recommend, oh, and I would point out that the lease term for this is until June 15th, 2017. They need to provide us notice by June 1st if they need to extend the lease. And then we of course would work out those details, so staff would recommend approval.
Thank you Chris. Any questions of Chris on this matter? I do have one question. Chris, can you tell us what the status of the courthouse improvements are right now?
Yes, they've selected walled architects. They also have a construction manager on site. They've been doing some work in there. I still don't have any details on when they think they'll be done, but you know, things are moving along. They know that there's no air conditioning in the larger area, in the gym area that they're in, and so I'm sure they'll want to get out of there as quickly as they can, so.
Any other questions for Chris?
I just have a couple of statements and I just want to publicly go out that I prefer to see that the county be out of there by June. My feeling is the lease amount of $100 is very low. I mean, we basically charge more than that to nonprofits up here at West Hills for a vacant building, not a furnished building like the county is getting. There's wear, tear on the carpet, furniture, and walls. And in this lease agreement, it is not very clear that the county will pay us or repair those items. And I think as far as, you know, it is very weak as far as if they will pay us as a return on that. So I'm just a little reluctant on this one and it's, I know that the community as a whole supports the county and they are taxpayers and we are trying to do our best to help them with this, but I think the eventual need is to have our fire department as a whole and use that facility as a fire department and not as a courthouse. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you Jeff. Any further questions or comments? There be none. What was the council's wishes on this lease?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Dave to approve the lease. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we move on to ordinances. We have one ordinance that is 3.3.1. It is the second reading of proposed ordinance 3-17 to amend Appendix A of the right-of-way fees. And we'll go to Kyle for this.
Good evening. This is the second reading of the ordinance. When we implemented the ordinance for right-of-way back in May of 2016, we established fees. One of those fees we found was a bit too high, so we're recommending that the per-foot fee for utility installation be reduced from 75 cents per foot to 20 cents per foot. And this would be the second reading and staff recommends approval.
Thank you Kyle. Any questions of Kyle? Dave?
Kyle, it's quite a difference to go from 75 cents a foot to 20. How did we end up with such a gap there?
Well, we borrowed the fees that we suggested back in May of 2016, probably from a south metro city. And we found that once we started implementing those fees, they were becoming cost prohibitive for some of our local, you know, whether it's cable or telephone provider. Met with one of them and they suggested that that should probably be lowered. We looked into it and they were right.
So we're pretty comparable now with communities around us?
A lot of them don't charge. They don't charge a per-foot fee. Since we just started it from scratch and we didn't really know where to be, but we feel we'll be much more, we'll still be able to cover our costs and kind of looked at, we'll have a temporary person this summer for utility inspections and what that will cost us and we'll be able to cover our costs.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin to approve this ordinance. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff. This is an ordinance, so we have to have a roll call, so.
Councilmember Rainey.
Aye.
Spenvy.
Aye.
Boss.
Aye.
Oakberg.
Aye.
Dodson.
Aye.
Burbank.
Aye.
And Schultz.
Aye.
All seven ayes.
So this ordinance will take effect as soon as it is published. Thank you. Next item is, we go to resolutions. The first one is 3.4.1, Resolution 29-17 to accept bids and award the contract for the 2017 LaMond Road Project. We'll go to Kyle for this.
We, last Wednesday, March 29th, excuse me, received bids for the 2017 LaMond Road Project. This is the section LaMond Road from Kim Lane to I-35. We received seven good bids and they were all good representative bids. The low bidder was Yuland Brothers of Albert Lee at $1,113,434.44. It was a little over $100,000 under our engineer's estimate, so we feel we've got a good bid and recommend approval.
Thank you Kyle. It was good to see that we had a good number of bidders on it, so we got a pretty good handle on what the costs are.
Yeah, we were concerned. We hadn't heard a lot of questions until a couple of days before bids, so either we did a really good job of, on our plans, or they were busy bidding other projects.
We'll see, you did a good job on your plans, so. Any further, any questions or comments of Kyle?
Just a question for Kyle. Kyle, can you explain like the timeline again for this construction project, starting and ending date?
So we don't have a start date that would be dependent on the contractor, but the completion date is September 1st. So before Labor Day, they're supposed to be substantially complete.
Any other questions or comments? Council's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brent to approve Resolution 29-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda is 3.4.2, Resolution 30-17 to accept bids and award the contract for the 2017 North Cedar Avenue Project. And back to you Kyle.
Again, last Wednesday, we took bids for the North Cedar Project. This is from Front Street to North Street and we received six bids. They were very competitive. The low bid was Holtmeyer Construction out of Mankato at $1,63,642.3. It's slightly over our engineer's estimate, but based on the number of bids we received and the competitiveness of it, we feel it's a good bid and we recommend approval.
Thank you Kyle. Any questions for Kyle on this one?
I have one question for you Kyle. It's been mentioned a couple of times, I don't know if it was from you, but there used to be that, or there is a gas station on that stretch. Sure. When they get into there and they find issues there, how does that, does that have any ramifications to this?
It could and we are registered with the State Petro Fund. Every bit of gasoline sold puts a small amount of money into the Petro Fund, so if we do encounter contamination in the roadway, we are set up to get reimbursed for those expenses from that fund. So we're hopeful that we won't encounter any, but in the case we do, we are ready to, we have a consultant on board that would respond as soon as we find any contamination.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions of Kyle? I have one Kyle, I have to ask every time, have we heard from the railroad?
We've tried.
That didn't answer my question.
We're working with them and we're trying to get both crossings resolved. We did pave the north one last year. They let us go in and fix it for them. So we're trying, Ron is working with the, on the mainline track on the south end of the project, but nothing firm yet, so.
Thank you. Any other questions of Kyle?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kevin Rainey to approve Resolution 30-17. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Any further discussion? There be none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda is item 3.4.3, Resolution 31-17 to approve plans and order bids for the 2017 curb and gutter project. And back to you again Kyle.
This is the project that was petitioned for from Majestic Oaks and Partridge Second subdivisions. They are existing streets without the tuminous pavement and curb and gutter. The residents would like us to come in and put curb and the tuminous in. 100% of the project is assessed to the 100% of the project is assessed to the benefit of property owners. We have an estimated cost of $653,000, and we recommend approval. Our bid date will be April 26th.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions of Kyle?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Brent to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug, any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is 3.4.4, Resolution 35-17, Resolution to Support Local Decision-Making Authority, and we go to Chris for this one.
Thank you, Greg. I don't know if you've been following the legislature, there's been a significant amount of legislation introduced this session that would remove or restrict local control in a number of areas that we find disturbing. For example, constrain our local law enforcement authority, restrict our ability to set local ordinances, allowing certain businesses unfettered access to the public rights of way, restricting the city's ability to use allowed fee structures, reducing our local government aid based on factors with no relation to the statutory local government aid formula. So in light of all of these legislative initiatives introduced, we would ask the council to consider approving the resolution attached here that supports local decision-making authority. We feel local officials are elected to make decisions about local budgets and meet community needs. So our budget impact could be a reduction, a potential reduction in local government aid, and reduced levy authority. So staff would recommend approval of Resolution 35-17.
Thank you, Chris, and I guess I wholeheartedly approve of this resolution. Any comments or questions for Chris on this matter?
Chris, I was trying to recall if we'd ever have this come before us in previous years.
You know.
It kind of rang a bell that we had to do this once before with the legislature overactive.
Right, several, yes, we have, several years ago, there was a number of levy limit legislation introduced, and then this did come up again, this reverse referendum and different things like that, so yeah, it's been a little while, but yeah, they've done it, tried to do it before.
Any other questions, Chris? There being none, look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve Resolution 35-17, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate, any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Chris. Next, we move on to miscellaneous items. The first one is 3.5.1, Approval to Purchase the Property Located at 327 North Grove Avenue. We'll go to Troy for this.
As staff looks at future street projects and where improvements are needed, one of the more congested intersections in the city is the intersection of East Rose Street and North Grove. During peak times, we can have a lengthy backup of vehicles at this intersection. The intersection currently has a four-way stop with no turn lanes. As traffic numbers increase, there's going to become a need for additional turn lanes, possibly traffic signals, or possibly even a roundabout. In order to accommodate improvements to this intersection, more space is needed. The property at 327 North Grove is the closest structure to that intersection. The property is for sale, and staff would recommend proposing, proposing the city purchase the property to allow options for improvements to that intersection. The city has a purchase agreement on the property contingent on city council approval. Purchase price is $49,500, which will be paid for by some remaining state aid funds, as well as funds that have been set aside for future street projects. The property is a small property, it's 50 feet wide by 59 feet deep. It does have a small duplex, which was built in 1900. The duplex is within 15 feet of the street right-of-way, and is within a few feet of the neighboring homes. The duplex does need many improvements, and staff would recommend demolishing the structure rather than renting the property. All expenses, including demolition costs, would be covered by the state aid funds and funds set aside for future projects. Demolition of the duplex would be contracted out and is estimated between that $10,000 and $15,000 range. So staff would recommend approval of the purchase of the property at 327 North Grove.
Thank you, Troy. Any questions for Troy on this matter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Is there any asbestos abatement in this one or not?
Yeah, we would, with every demolition, we have asbestos testing done, and any asbestos removed, so that'll be part of the demolition costs.
Any other questions of Troy?
During your arm-twisting call, you indicated maybe a roundabout down there. Is that still an option, or would we have to acquire additional properties to do that?
So more right-of-way would likely be needed for that, but that at least keeps that option open with the purchase of this property. So no designs or anything has been done or are being proposed at this time. Right now, we're just looking to secure that option, and down the road here, we'll be looking at what could be done at this intersection.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Troy? What are the council's wishes on this item?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve purchase of the property 327 North Grove, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Dave, any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we move on to item 3.5.2, To Congratulate and Educate Annual Plan for the Minnesota Department of Human Services. We'll go to Chris for this.
Thank you, Greg. The police department has been awarded a grant by the Minnesota Department of Human Services. This is called a "Congratulate and Educate" grant, and the purpose is to conduct unannounced tobacco compliance checks. These checks are for educational purposes, and no sanctions would be incurred from the state, or the county, or the city. So the goal is just to congratulate clerks who pass a compliance check, and to provide education on the law, what compliance checks are, why they're important, and the possible penalties when they sell to someone who is under 18. So we get reimbursed through this grant $40 per compliance check, and we'll conduct about 29 compliance checks in the city, and so we're anticipating about $1,160 in reimbursement, and we recommend approval of the grant contract.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions of Chris on this matter? Council's wishes on getting some money?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jeff to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Nate, any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That ends all the action items on our agenda tonight. Now we go to public comments. Anyone who in the audience here is free to come up to the microphone and make a comment. We asked that you limit your comments to two minutes or less, and items not on the Doesn't appear to be anyone, so we'll move on to council comments, and first up is Kevin.
I have nothing this evening.
Brent?
Nothing this evening.
Doug?
Nothing for me either.
Nothing for you either. Jeff?
Quick comment, just for Josh over in the corner there. April is going to be enforcement action on texting while driving, so locally, you will have quite a few police officers working overtime, so please, do not text and drive. It's very dangerous and causes many accidents, and it was something that I took pride in and didn't really enjoy during my time in my career, and seeing people get hurt is not a good thing, so appreciate your efforts on that.
Thank you, Jeff, good advice. Nate?
The only thing I would make people aware of, there was a scam going on a couple years back, I looked it up, about solicitations to get a copy of your deed, and it looks official, and it's not, $89 to send you a copy of your deed. Don't send them any money, just go to the county if you want one of those.
Thank you. Dave?
Oakie stole my thunder, so no further.
No further comments, okay. Mr. Mayor, you have some comments for us?
No comments today.
No comments? Chris?
Oh, I have a couple. Brooktree, an update there, the course will open noon on Thursday, April 6th. The clubhouse will be open the day before Wednesday from 7:00 to noon, so golf season is going to officially start on Thursday. And then a reminder for council that council members have been invited to the Road Runner Dash at Lincoln Elementary, and they would love for you to be part of their special day and throw color at their runners. So if you're available, it's on, what day is it?
March 30th.
May 31st. Rain date is June 1st, so I'll just put that on your list of things to do if you're available. And also another reminder about the annual conference for the league is in Rochester this year, June 14th through the 16th, so let myself or Jeanette know if you're able to attend, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Chris.
Oh, and, and, also the local Board of Equalization is coming up on April 11th, and trustee Troy will be here with you, since I shall be not here in Mexico, so, sorry about that. That's at 7:00 PM, and you know, Bill Efforts and his staff come, and that's where we listen to folks who have concerns about their assessed valuation, not their taxes, what their property is valued at, so that's when we'll be doing that.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
One comment, I did run into Mr. Linda Kugel today, and he wanted to know if we had another coffee with the council scheduled, so I'm not sure.
We're talking about changing the format, instead of going in the morning to maybe something different, but I'm certainly open to whatever you guys want to do.
We'd normally go again like in May.
Yeah, May would be our normal time. We could maybe look at some dates and.
Let's get some dates together, and we can decide in May, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Jeff, did you have a comment?
Chris, how many of us are required to be at the Equalization, and I know there's several of us that are certified, and I just want to make sure we're.
We have to have a quorum, so yeah. And I think, is everyone up certified for the LBAE?
I don't bring it, but I know, Kevin, certified again this spring, did you not?
No, I haven't had.
Nate went through. We have Nate, and we have, we're required to have one, and we have like, I believe, four.
But we have some folks whose certification is up after this, after this meeting, after April, so we'll want some more to recertify. It's always nice to have more than one.
Can begin that recertification process, it is done online, and that recertification process is available from July through like the end of January, and so we'll be reminding you come August and September that hopefully we can, ideally, since it is online, you can do it anytime over the latter part of the months of the year.
Okay, thank you, Jeanette. And I guess all I have to say is, looks like spring is getting closer, so let's get out there and enjoy it, so. I look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Kevin to adjourn, do I hear a second?
Second.
I assume there's no discussion on that, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're done.